Good evening. It is now 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the Richland County Regular Session Council Meeting for March 19th, 2024, to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the roll, please?
Brenham?
Here.
Pugh?
Here.
McBride?
Here.
Livingston?
Here.
Terisha?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
English?
Present.
Newton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And for the record, I'd like to state that Councilwoman Newton did notify me ahead of time per council rules that she would be attending tonight's meeting virtually. Next item on the agenda is invocation. Vice Chair Pugh, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. English will be standing there for me this evening.
Thank you. May we all look to the throne. Father, it's in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, that we come in acknowledging you, your deity, your sovereignty, your grace, your mercy. We stand in awe of your splendor. As we call on you, God, we understand and recognize that we can do nothing without you, that everything moves by your grace and by your Holy Spirit. Father, we just thank you that in you, Lord, we live, move, and have our being. And as we are called, Lord, to care for the things of Richland County, we ask for your wisdom, your knowledge, your understanding, and your revelation. Guide and direct our hearts toward the citizens we serve of Richland County. Father, continue to bless the citizens, continue to bless this staff, and continue to bless this council. We want to thank you for the progress that we've been making and the things that we've accomplished. Continue to be with us, Lord, as we continue to move this county forward. Allow us to move in your strength, bringing you glory, honor, and praise. We thank you for always being our ever-present help. We adore you and praise you. We thank you, and it's in the mighty name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we say thank you. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. English. If you can, please stand with me for the saying of the pleasure of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next item is approval of minutes from a regular session meeting on March 5th, 2024.
Second.
For motion and a second, is there any discussion?
No, Chair.
You're recognized, Ms. McBride.
On page nine or two or four.
Councilwoman McBride, if you could pull your mic, thank you.
On page nine or two or four, item 4A and 5B, the name McIntyre is there. I think it was supposed to be McBride. McBride is missing, and I don't know a McIntyre.
All right.
Noted.
All right, thank you. Do we need to amend our motion to approve with corrections?
We can accept the motion with her corrections.
All right. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terisha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
A move.
Second.
Of a motion for approval and a second, is there any discussion? Administrator Brown, any additions, deletions?
No recommended changes, Madam Chair.
All right, hearing that.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terisha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next is the report of the attorney for non-executive session items. Attorney Wright, you're recognized.
Yes, Madam Chair. We have one item for non-executive session. It's a resolution expanding the functions, duties, and powers of the Transportation and Penny Advisory Committee, T-PAC. And the purpose of this resolution is to charge the T-PAC to meet more often in the next few months so that they can advise council and make recommendations regarding transportation projects, potential projects, and also allowing council to charge them, the municipalities that have members, that have vacant seats to fill those positions by April 5th. And if they are not filled by that time, then the chair of county council and the chair of committee can make recommendations for those positions, and the county council will fill them.
Thank you. Attorney Wright, you're recognized, Councilwoman Walker.
Wright, does this item require a vote this evening?
Yes, it's a resolution, so it will require a vote of council.
All right, move to approve.
A motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Yes, Councilwoman Wright.
Madam Chair, on page 16 or 24, section four. It says, "If you know the current representative vacancies as of the date of this resolution, the county council chair and chair of the committee are authorized to recommend appointments to fill any vacancies." I would like to make a friendly amendment to include the rules of the community chair. Since that is the committee that's responsible for appointments.
You're in a motion, second, discussion. Were you asking the maker of the motion to amend?
To accept a friendly amendment. Currently, if the vacancies, if there needs to be a vacancy, then only the county council and the chair of the transportation committee can make a recommendation to the council.
If I may, I'm sorry, Ms. McBride, continue on. If I may, you're recognized, Madam Chair.
You're recognized, Councilwoman Walker.
The only misgiving I have, Ms. McBride, is we're kind of already sort of under the proverbial gun, if you will, in terms of the timeline. And so, for me, I think there's not only this language we currently have, not only doesn't streamline it, but it also allows us to expedite, you know, the, I guess, the appointment process, if you will, for filling those vacancies. Ordinarily, those vacancies would be filled by another municipality. But if they remain, and of course, this could be moved if the vacancies are filled by April the 5th of this year, but in the event that they're not, I just think we need to move with all deliberate speed to get those vacancies filled. And I think the quickest way to do it would be to empower the chair of county council to do it, or the chair of the transportation ad hoc committee. But if we were not under the proverbial gun, or if we were not, I guess, so short on time, I wouldn't have a problem with it going through rules and appointments.
I'm not saying put it through rules, Madam Chair.
You're recognized, Councilwoman McBride.
I'm not saying take it through the rules and appointment committee, because here it requires the chair of county council and the chair of the committee. I'm saying in keeping with policy, and I don't think an extra person would require that much, will delay it that much. My concern is that even if just the county council chair and the chair of the committee, if they disagree, you still got a tie there. With three people on there, that would break that tie.
Oh, or why not have the language to read, council chair or chair of the committee? Doesn't have to be both.
Madam Chair?
Yes, you're recognized, Attorney Wright.
What they're saying is not that they have to agree, is that they both can make a recommendation, but it's up to county to actually choose, county council to choose who it is. So, they can recommend the same person, they can recommend two different people, but county council would choose who it is. So, it's, they don't have to agree, county council has to agree.
Does that allow, Madam Chair?
Recognized. Yes, ma'am, you're rec.
Does that still allow the council to make a recommendation? Because I'm one for ensuring geographical equity, I'm one for ensuring fairness, and input from the council. So, the council input would be to accept one or the other, but not necessarily having input and making a referral. So, that's why I said, if the three, I would feel that there was more of an equity issue being presented with.
Madam Chair.
Recognized, Attorney.
Well, at any point during a council meeting, any councilperson can request to say, hey, this person, I recommend they would be a great person, and council can vote on that person at that meeting. It's just that the recommendations prior to would be from those two individuals.
I'm going to continue the discussion. From my reading, it said the chair and the chair of the committee would make a recommendation to which council would vote off.
Thank you. Ms. McBride, I mean, excuse me. Councilwoman Barron, you're recognized.
Thank you. So, as being the chair of Rules and Appointment Committee, and I had this conversation with the chair of council as well, I would hope that we would keep in mind that there are applicants that have already applied, and we, our clerk's office does an excellent job in maintaining those applications that are on file. So, if we are indeed going to go with this process, that I would hope that council and our chair, as well as the chair of the committee, would keep in mind that there are individuals already in the pipeline to be appointed as a first line of defense, given that this is not our traditional mechanism of doing things.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I just would like to remind, I would like to remind the body that the positions that you would be appointing would be the positions for the entities, the municipalities that have the vacancies. So, it's not the general Richland County positions, it's the municipality positions, but you would be the appointed party if they don't fill them prior to.
Right. You're recognized, Councilwoman Livingston.
I can read a good word here, but I'd like to move to add.
You had a motion and a second. Councilwoman McBride asked, requested a friendly amendment that was not accepted, so we're still in discussion.
I second Ms. Livingston's motion.
Okay. Could you state it again, sir?
Okay.
Any further discussion? Madam Chair? Just one more, Ms. Newton. Attorney Wright, any concerns with this motion legally?
I don't think that, I think we were already in the middle of a motion, so made a motion in the middle of another motion, so that's the only current, I think we have to deal with the motion on the floor first.
Was he asking for an amendment? No, he was not, because you did.
I may be recognized, Madam Chair.
Sorry, were you done, Attorney Wright?
Right, no, I think that that would, it would have to be an amendment, if that's the.
I made the motion, Ms. McBride made the friendly amendment, which did not go accepted, and so now there's a substitute motion on the floor, which has been seconded. So, I think we're.
Councilwoman Newton, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I could not hear Councilwoman Livingston speaking at all, so if someone could repeat what that friendly amendment is, I'd appreciate that.
That's up to motion, it was just to add to the group, the chair of the Rules and Appointments Committee, the group that's making a recommendation to the full council.
Thank you.
So, it's a substitute motion, not a friendly amendment?
Substitution motion.
Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terisha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Oh.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Attorney Wright, did that need to be reconsidered?
Yes.
Move to reconsider?
Of a motion and a second, Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Terisha?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Barron?
No.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Attorney Wright?
Yes. That sets for the non-executive session items. For executive session, we have two matters. First is Disability Rights versus Richland County pursuant to SE Code 30-4-70 subsection A2, and Butler versus Richland County pursuant to SE Code 30-4-17 subsection A2 as well. And we do not have any outside counsel for those matters.
Thank you. So, seeing as though both items do not have outside counsel, we will hold these to the end of the meeting. Moving to item eight, citizens' input. For items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have any individuals sign up this evening to speak?
No.
Next is item nine, citizens' input must pertain to Richland County matters not on the agenda. Items for which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled cannot be addressed at this time. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have any individuals signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, ma'am, we have three individuals that signed up to speak. I'm going to call your name, we'll come down to their podium. Please state your name and your address, and you have two minutes to speak. The first person is Brad Swanson. I hope I pronounced your last name right, if I did. Brad, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Brad Swanson, 7716 Layton Road, zip 29209. Basically, I feel that we need to review the current land development code. The current zoning severely restricts certain entities in the residential zone, including but not limited to the owner's property's rights and certain individual rights within I feel that we need to review the current land development code. The current zoning severely restricts certain entities in the residential zone, including but not limited to owner's property's rights, certain businesses, and individual rights. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have David Bergman. So, David, if you come down, please state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Sure, thank you. David Bergman, 560 Regatta Road, it's Columbia, South Carolina, 29212, sorry, we just moved. I just wanted to echo what Brad said, that I think we need to look again at that, that maybe there were some parties not involved or not aware of that. We both represent entities, property management entities, that are going to be severely affected by that, and I think it's related to some upcoming public hearings. And so, you'll hear from us again, I think, there on the specifics, but we just want to bring that attention to the council and just ask that we continue to review that.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Wendy Bergman. Ms. Wendy, please state your name and your address for the record, you have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
Wendy Bergman, my address is 560 Regatta Road, 29212. David is my husband. We are business owners, and we are based in Richland County. As previously stated, the land development code that went into effect recently does impact our business, it impacts our employees and families that rely on us and our business here in the Midlands. There's issues that we have in that ordinance, or in the land development code, that we don't feel like we were properly educated on. There are other people within our group that are also equally disappointed in what has come out of it. We're hoping to be invited to the table to readdress some things that are related to that. There is an ordinance coming up, or an ordinance, public hearing coming up, but the ordinance is kind of a moot point because the zoning already doesn't allow us to operate the way we have been. So, if that could be, those doors could be opened up, and we could have another discussion about some of those items, that would be much appreciated by us and the group that we represent. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Chair, that's the only folks that signed up to speak.
Thank you. Next, item 10, report of the county administrator. Administrator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of council, you should have been provided a copy of the 2024 annual comprehensive financial report. Don't expect for you to read all of that this evening, but you do have access to that. If you have future questions, we simply ask that you contact either ACA Thomas, or feel free to contact our director, finance director Stacy Hamm, and she can facilitate those conversations with you. Moving on to item 10A2, annually, it is a function of the county ordinance that the Richland County Conservation Commission provide an update concerning their plans going forward to the next fiscal year as we prepare for the budget. We do have the chair here to provide a brief presentation to you regarding that item. So, I would ask Mr. John Grego if he would come forward and provide council with that annual plan information. And Madam Chair, if you recognize him, I'll turn over the next few moments to Mr. Grego.
Good evening, you're recognized, Mr. Grego.
Thank you. I believe I have six minutes to speak.
No, sir. I'm joking. Got you, John. I always enjoy hearing from you.
Let's see, I'd like to point out that the county's Conservation Division Conservation Program Analyst, John McKenzie's in the audience, as well as commission members Charles Weber and Jim Young. All right. See, next slide, please. Okay, so the Conservation Commission was created by county ordinance, and each council member chooses a commissioner to serve on the commission. And of course, we protect the county's natural, historic, and cultural resources and promote eco and heritage and nature-based tourism. Next slide. We, part of our function is to prepare plans to protect and manage the county's natural and cultural resources, and these are some of the plans that we've prepared over the years. Next slide. I'm going to talk about some programs that are paid by the Hathmill Special Revenue Fund. We request $250,000 each year for our Conservation Commission grants geared toward historic preservation and natural resources. I was just at the Hyatt Park kiosk dedication today, and one of the presenters there, Betsy Newman, referred to the Conservation Commission as one of the unsung heroes of Richland County, in large part because of these grant programs. Okay, next slide. A more modest program is our historical markers, where we fund one or two or none an average each year, but it is a program that has an impact. Next slide, please. Okay, and then our Conservation Program Analyst is in charge of our Conservation Easement Program, and he inspects monitors and works on acquisition of our conservation easements. We, in the past few years, we've got a big assist from the county GPS team with the use of drones to help monitor our conservation easements for compliance. Next slide, please. We make our decisions about acquiring property or protecting property by conservation easements based on a green infrastructure analysis that we prepared some years ago, and it identified four priority watersheds, actually five subwatersheds distributed throughout the county, and the Kowasi Basin as well. Next slide, please. Okay, yeah. In addition to the Hathmill Special Revenue Fund, we also have a general fund transfer in to help us manage the properties the county owns, including the Mill Creek Tract, Pinewood Lake Park, the Broad River Property, and our Cabin Branch Tract. Besides the general transfer fund used to manage those properties, of course, we have projects on those tracts that require other fund sources. For instance, the Mill Creek Bridge replacement, a $1.1 million project that procurement is just about ready to sign the contract on. And with the Broad River property, we just signed a simple lease with the Columbia Rowing Club for them to manage that property, but we are talking to other local governments and agencies about a more comprehensive plan that would allow both rowing docks and fishing docks on that property. Next slide. The Lower Richland Tourism Plan, for which we anticipate multiple projects that promote the Lower Richland Tourism Plan to take place in any given year. I'll just note that there's been really strong interest in the Lower Richland Tourism Plan from the Central Midlands Council of Governments and the Washington Office of the National Park Service because of its ties to the Congry Biosphere region, and we actually just had a meeting with them during the Congry Research Symposium to discuss funding opportunities to help implement the Lower Richland Tourism Plan. Next slide, please. Some Lower Richland Tourism Plan projects for this year include improving the roads on the Mill Creek Tract, and developing tourism experiences, and small business development, the three legs of that stool. And the Shoreland Mata Conservation District and Conservation Division have recently hired new staff who will help promote those projects. Next slide, please. This is a list of some of our ongoing projects, including supporting the Agon Art Tour, the Heritage Tourism Marketing Plan. We had worked with a contractor last year to develop some recommendations, and we're in the process right now of vendor selection to help implement those recommendations, which includes GIS virtual tour of Lower Richland County. And the bidding for that, or the bids for that actually close next week. We also hope to develop the parks, the county's first ever historic preservation plan, and vendor selection for that will open tomorrow. It's, we've already been talking with the planning department about a possible amendment to the county comprehensive plan to add that work product, the historic preservation plan, to the county comprehensive plan. We're negotiating on several large tracts of land, and we've been developing cemetery ordinance to help better protect the county's historic cemeteries. And, yeah, okay, that covers all those items. Next bullet, please. Okay, yeah. Financial summaries, last year, we did not fund, we did not need the full $250,000 grant funding, but the program was definitely oversubscribed this year, and we will need full $250,000. In part, we did a better job publicizing the program this year and had, in part because of good coordination with the county's Public Information Office. Okay, next slide. This shows our financial summaries from the last two years. There's been some underspending due to staff vacancies. The land program plan are positioned in particular. The land program plan or position in particular has been open for a couple of years. We've made multiple offers, but the offers have not been competitive with other offers that those applicants have received. If you look at the large unspent portion each year, that's just because we can't necessarily predict when these large programs will land. The, the large land acquisition project, the Mill Creek Bridge bidding and construction. But, but there are lots of projects in the pipeline. It's, it's just a matter of whether they, they lean this year or next. And that was all I had to present. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much, Mr. Grego. Does anyone, council members have any questions, comments related to this presentation? Councilman Weaver, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. John, I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunities I've had to meet with you. I'm excited about some of the programs that y'all are doing. On this ongoing projects page, financial support, Richland County Ag Tour, have, have y'all ever received H taxes for that?
There has been some discussion of H tax funding, and certainly for the, thanks for mentioning that. Certainly for the, the, his, the Heritage Tourism Marketing Plan, that, that is, a large part of that was H tax funding from several years ago. And I think it was first envisioned as a virtual tour, but it's been reconceived as something bigger. And really, the, this.
We probably need to talk later, because I'd like to try to help with that from my district funds, if, if at all possible, so.
Oh, yeah.
Make, make a note of that.
To talk with you about that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Aaron, you're recognized.
Thank you, and thank you for the update. You mentioned the position that we're having a challenge filling this position. And have we looked at any type of alternative to hiring someone? Maybe a contractor, a contracted staff person versus employee of the county? Or, or is that an option? Because I, I would, I would imagine this is a very important individual that we would need to have on our team, and not, and not having this person for several years does put us at a disadvantage. I mean, the obvious is, yeah, you need more money to make the salary competitive, but we, we did that already with the, with the, with the study that we just did. So that's probably not going to work, but, so let's look at another option. And so the other option I'm thinking is maybe circumventing and going contract.
Right, yeah, yeah. Some of the duties of that, of that position really do stretch Quinteneps thin. And we were actually talking about our most recent council meeting. I, I'd hate to commit to anything, but the position description, it is, it is an ambitious description. And so it is, it's not necessarily an easy fit. And so it is the, and, and so the suggestion you hinted at is one of the alternatives we've, we've considered. You know, should, of course, we're, we're very interested in the position. We certainly needed to help promote the Lower Richland Tourism Plan, but should some of those responsibilities maybe not quite so tightly tied to the Lower Richland Tourism Plan, could they be contracted out?
I just want.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I would just like to encourage you all to reimagine this position. And as you reimagine this position, do something that is, that is attainable right, you know, at this point. And when you look at, because Quinteneps is stretched thin. And so we want, we, we want to keep good people here in the county. And so how can we, you know, help him get the, the help that he needs? I think that that would be an example or even an idea that I would like to see the commission to explore, and, and, you know, just maybe not tie in the hands of the, of this position at this point, but thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, comments? Thank you so much, Mr. Grego. You didn't even use your full six minutes.
I didn't. It felt a little longer. But thank you.
Thank you. Administrator Brown, you're recognized.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, members of council. I'm going to move on to item 10A3, the Family Services Center Exterior Elevation. In your packet, you have a couple of renderings that you have seen before. And now what we're asking you to do is to provide a specific feedback. And I believe that we've requested that you provide input to the Clerk of Council by March 26. And so I saw some members here in the audience, I'm not sure if any of the directors of the agencies came, but all three of them, the Director of Department of Social Services, the Director of whichever part of DHEC, I don't want to offend anybody. I know they're going through a, a change there, but Directors, Simber, Director Leach, and also Director Curry, DHHS, all sent the council letters through me communicating their appreciation for the work that the county has done on the plans. They've communicated their support of the plans. They want me to provide you those letters, and you will have that information. But what you see here is a continuation of that process of us moving forward. And so this is time, not today in this meeting, but this is time for council input on what do you want the facade to look like. So in your packet, you've been providing some renderings, and we are asking for you to provide us feedback so that we can move forward with that process. So that represents item 10A3. And before I move on from there, I'll take any questions that you have, Madam Chair, members of council.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Okay. So the next item, which comes under the administrative nomination, these are items where I am requesting for action from county council. The first one deals with the acceptance of a grant, which is item 10B1, Animal Services. And if you look, I believe, on page, I'm going to say 43, I want to point your attention to why we're asking for approval. If you look at the second to the last paragraph, it says, and this is the, the grant, DHEC talking to Richland County, you do not need to apply for funding. You will be receiving a predetermined dollar amount. However, you will need to sign a contract agreement, which basically states that you will spend the awarded funds on mosquito control equipment and products that will, and that you will submit receipts to us for reimbursement. So that's why we have to come to you and ask for approval as council to accept the funding and allow me to execute the agreement for the amount of $68,301.22 to be used to support vector control, which is certainly going to help support disease control here in our community of Richland County. So that is staff's recommendation, and so I'm asking for approval of that item.
So moved.
I can.
Thank you. Had a motion for approval in a second. Any discussion? So Weaver, then Teratio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Brown, I just have a quick question. Is this, is in the budget now, or where's the money coming from?
This is a grant that's coming from the Department of Health and Environment Control to support a disease control in the community.
I'm good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Teratio.
I just wanted to say that I have already seen a swarm of mosquitoes. Thank you. We need to get rid of them. It's really bad.
Thank you. We had a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Ms. McBride, you're recognized.
Just wanted to add, add a comment. They did a formula grant for the state and for the county, and that's to ensure that each county is represented and not having to go through a discretionary process, but having equity in all the counties. And that's one of the things that I stressed in other areas of our grant funding process. So council members take note. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clark, would you take the vote, please? Other roll, please, for the vote.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair, move. Teratio?
Second.
Motion in a second. Madam Clark?
Brenham?
No.
Pew?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teratio?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Administrator Brown, you're recognized.
The next and final item deals with the Community Development Block Grant Program. And if I could just be a little jovial, earlier today, if you were here and you heard one of our members of this department talk about their excitement for the, what the county is being able to do with Community Development Block Grant Funds, here's an example of why that team is so excited. So staff request that council approve the contracts for two CDBG Affordable Rental Housing Acquisition and Rehab Projects with SC Uplift and Reconciliation Ministries for the development of four apartments and one single-family home for lower or moderate-income families in unincorporated areas of the county. The contracts will include a CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Subrecipient Agreement, and a Community Development Block Grant Developers Agreement. And if you want to know what those specific projects are, if you look on pages 50, Project One is with SC Uplift, and that's where the Acquisition and Rehab of a Single Family Home is located. That will be in District Three. The address is listed there, and the award amount is specifically also spelled out in the packet. And then Project Two is where Reconciliation Ministries, and that is the Acquisition and Rehab of a Quadraplex, which will be in District Two. And again, the award amount is listed there in the documents. So we are requesting approval of this particular item. And as you heard earlier, our staff is really excited about this potential opportunity to support our community.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for approval in a second. Any discussion? Councilwoman Teratio, you're recognized.
Just a quick question. Both of these, are, both of these rentals? So the SC Uplift and Reconciliation Ministries are the landlords, if you will?
One is described as a, a single-family home, and one is divi, defined as a rental.
Okay.
You're recognized, Councilwoman Pew.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm excited to hear this, because Reconciliation Ministries are doing some amazing things in District Two. If you're familiar with Betty Downs area over, off of Broad River Road, it has a reputation, and they've been doing a great job of restoring that community. So I'm excited to hear this.
Madam Clark?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Reconsider? Second. Motion in a second for reconsideration. Madam Clark?
Brenham?
No.
Pew?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
Teratio?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker? Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Administrator Brown?
Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Next item on the agenda is Report of the Clerk of Council.
I don't have any at this time, Chair Mackey.
Thank you. Next is Report of the Chair. I do not have any updates. Next is item 13, Approval of Consent Items. 13A is case number 23-026MA Tony Lawton, RU to GC. Yes, Councilwoman Walker, you're recognized.
Second.
The motion for approval 13A and B in a second. Any discussion? Madam Clark?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item 14, Second Reading Items. 14A, An Ordinance Authorizing a Quick Claim Deed to Bobby J. and Nancy Y. Spivey for Unused and Unopened Right-of-Way on Lake Dogwood Circle South. Yes, you recognize?
Second.
Approval in a second. Any discussion? Madam Clark?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, 14B, Authorizing the Expansion of the Boundaries of the I-77 Corridor Regional Industrial Park jointly developed with Fairfield County to include certain property located in Richland County. The execution delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement to provide for infrastructure Oli Technologies LLC and other related matters.
Chair.
You recognize, Mr. Walker?
Move to approve. I can.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next item is item 15, Report of Economic Development Committee. Councilman Livingston, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, item 15B, Approval of Selecting an Engineering Firm and of Grants for Raw SE and Richland Industrial Park. The committee's recommendation was for approval. Just for a little, just for a little update, in February of 2022, Richland County entered into a five-year optional agreement for the approximately 1,686 acres of, of land in, in the southeastern Richland County area. The county is receiving $181,000 in grant funds from, from the Department of Revenue as, as, which will be utilized for, for the majority of the expenditure for this particular project. So the committee's recommendation was for approval.
Thank you. Any recommendation?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Mr. Livingston, you're recognized.
That completes the report of the.
Thank you. Next is item 16, Report of Rules and Appointments Committee. Councilman Baron, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have several appointments to be made today. The first one is for the Richland Memorial Hospital. There are four vacancies. The committee is recommending Charles Mills, Lachlan Wooton, Andrea Darden, and reappointing Mr. Edwin Garrison.
Okay, you want to start with that one?
I.
Okay.
Yes, please.
All right. We heard a committee recommendation for, I believe, three names she listed.
Four.
Four names?
I can repeat.
Madam Clark?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?[1684.64]
Yes.
Motion approved.
Recognize, Miss Barron?
Thank you. The next appointment is for Lareda. There are two vacancies, and the committee is recommending Crystal Marks and reappointing Harold Ward.
All right, committee's recommendation. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Walker? Barron?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Recognize, Miss Barron?
Next appointment is for the Building Codes Board of Appeals. There are eight vacancies. However, because of the lack of applicants that we had, we are making one appointment and re-advertising the remainder seven. And we are recommending appointing Sean Jackson to fill the building industry vacancy.
All right, you've heard the committee's recommendation. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next appointment is for the Central Midlands Regional Transit Authority, and the committee is recommending Roosevelt Barnwell.
You've heard the committee's recommendation? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
The next order, a report for our committee, is that there is an advertisement presently being ran. It will run until five o'clock on April the twenty-third, and you can see, you'll see the vacancies listed there. And they are listed in our packet on page one ninety-five.
Is this a recommendation or is this just information?
We do need approval.
Okay, so committee, you've heard their recommendation for notification of vacancies. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair, if I may, just as I always do, is to encourage council members, as well as those that are listening in the general audience and on social media or YouTube, if you're interested, please apply. We have several vacancies that need to be filled, and it's great when applicants come in and they are fully aware of the council member, and the council member does make the recommendation. It helps us with the engagement process, but we do want to get all these positions and vacancies filled. And those that are internal, I'd like to encourage Mr. Brown, if you could, also just help us with encouraging your staff to get some of those, to really push those internal vacancies that we have, because we're having a hard time filling those, like, the Board of Codes, Board of Codes and Appeals. That's really hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Barron? Next is Item Seventeen, Report of the Strategic Planning Ad-Hoc Committee. If you look on page one ninety-six of your document, of your agenda packet, there's an update on what we call Invisio. As a reminder to all council members, Invisio is the visual dashboard public piece that staff has been working on that will highlight all of our goals and objectives and track them so that the public can see where we are in relation to our strategic plan. And we are almost there. The official launch will be on April sixteenth, and there will be a full rollout from staff and the communications team. And wanted to make sure you all are aware, and you'll be notified ahead of that as well, so you can be informed.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am?
If I just may, I want to just to acknowledge the work that this particular committee has been doing. We were at SEAC in the Institute, and our instructor said that he went on to county, all the counties' websites to look for strategic plans that have been posted. And our county was one that was highlighted as being an example. And I think that once we get this dashboard live where people can be fully engaged, they'll continue to see the good work that this council, and specifically to this committee, that you all are doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. Next is an update on the website, also in our packet on page one ninety-seven. The website is, a new county website is another one of our goals and strategic plan. Wanted to give council an update to let you all know that we do have a website, RFP, currently out. And their schedule is in here so that you know, once they receive RFPs in, they'll go through the process. And hopefully, we will be on track of a notice of an award within the next sixty days. And staff will keep us posted on those steps. And then the final item is the Public Private Partnership on pages one ninety-eight to two hundred. And this is the piece where the committee would like feedback from council. We had a committee meeting as we looked at what we call our menu items for Public Private Partnership. Our menu is broken down into staple things, items that you would see many public-private partnerships have. But then also you have kind of your additional items or extras to consider that maybe we would like to include that would make our menu a little more special, so specialty menu items. We would like council members to review the menu items, the staple menu items, as well as the specialty menu items, and provide feedback. We are looking to prioritize some of the specialty menu items. We will receive an email from the clerk highlighting this again, and with a deadline for your requested feedback as we continue to work forward on the public-private partnership. That concludes the update from the Strategic Planning Ad-Hoc Committee. Next is Item Eighteen, Other Items. You recognize, Councilman Pugh?
I'd like to move for approval of Items Eighteen A and B.
Second.
We have a motion for approval in a second on Eighteen A and B. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Move to reconsider?
Second.
We have a motion for reconsideration in a second. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresha? Weaver?
No.
No.
Barron?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Walker?
No.
Barron?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
All right. We're at item number nineteen.
Madam Chair?
You recognize, Administrator Brown?
Yeah, I may have missed it, and if you did, I apologize, but could we reconsider Item Fifteen A? That was the one that came from the Economic Development Report related to the approval of the Selecting an Engineering Firm.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for reconsideration of Item Fifteen A. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresha?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Barron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails. Madam Chair, I do want to point out that we have an updated agenda, and we still have Item Eighteen C, D, and E.
Thank you, I just.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
You recognize?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve D, E, and C, D, and E, number eighteen.
Thank you. So we have a motion for approval of Items Eighteen C, D, and E. Thank you for second. Any discussion? For clarification, the previous motion was for Items Eighteen A and B, so this will get the remainder of items in number eighteen. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved. Move for reconsideration?
Second.
Motion in second for reconsideration of Item Eighteen C, D, and E. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston? Teresha?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Barron?
No.
Walker? Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. That brings us to Item Nineteen, Executive Session Items. So we have seventeen A, Disability Rights versus Richland County Pursuant to South Carolina Code Thirty dash four dash seven A two, and then seven B, Butler versus Richland County Pursuant to South Carolina Code Three zero one dash four dash seven zero eight two. We have a motion to go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
A second.
Any discussion?
Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We're now in executive session. We're now in executive session.